Twenty-four, meeting of the Board of Education to order. We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept a motion to approve the June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four agenda presented before us this evening. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Nohalani, second, Board Member Amanda. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four meeting agenda carries. The next order of business is the approval of the minutes. The minutes for the BOE meeting on June fifth, twenty-twenty-four are presented for approval. May I have a motion to accept these minutes? May I have a motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, Board Member Erica. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Any additions, corrections, discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept the June fifth, twenty-twenty-four board meeting minutes carries. Do we have any, one sign up? No, thank you. At this time, we will move it over or transition to Superintendent Cotto and his comments.
So, good evening, Board, staff, and community. As I get started, I mean, this is our last board meeting as we transition into the summer, so I'm hoping that, you know, all of our families and staff, you know, as we close out this particular year, have a great summer. Unplug, you know, get re-energized and getting ready for the following school year. I'd like to congratulate Alex Torres. We just learned this week that he was selected to be included, inducted into the Amsterdam School District's Hall of Fame. For those of you that know Alex, he wears many hats for us in Schenectady. He's part of the Innovation Equity and Engagement Team, our lead parent liaison, a strong advocate for our students and families, and just well-deserving of this honor, and he's a fantastic musician. So, that induction will be taking place in October. I'd also like to share that this afternoon, or this evening, this afternoon, we had the opportunity to go over to the, to the police department. The Schenectady Police Department recently launched a contest for high school students to design a car wrap for a public, a police car that will be driven by the community school, the community engagement officers. The school, uh, the car was donated by Metro Ford. This afternoon, the Schenectady Police hosted a ceremony to reveal the winning wrap. Congratulations to our first-place winner, which was Jasmine Canina, a high school senior, who won five hundred dollars and whose design will be on the CEO's vehicle, which will be at our high school graduation tomorrow. Second-place winner was awarded two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's Emmanuel Khan from, freshman, from the freshman academy. And then our third-place winner won a hundred and twenty-five dollars, Marsilia Page, also a freshman. So, all these, these three individuals were recognized this afternoon. The mayor, Santa Barbara. We have Jeff Russo, doctor, I'm not doctor, but Joe DiCaprio was in attendance, and just a great honor. It kind of aligns to the work that we're doing. The young lady who won this award is anticipating going, well, she's going to college, going to college to study arts, the arts, and it's all aligned with the work. So, the big thing with this is how we engage our students as they're in the, the communities in which we serve within the high school. It connects those dots and really makes this come to reality. So, look out for that vehicle tomorrow as we celebrate our, our high school graduation. It's also hard to believe that today is the last day of school. Tomorrow is the day where all, where all the work that we do comes, comes to, 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 you know, where all of our hard work comes to together, and that's the graduation. So, although we're saying it's the last day today, and it's not for spring break, but it's also to celebrate the graduation, which will take place tomorrow over at the high school. Graduation will take place at six PM tomorrow over at the track. We're excited and can't wait to celebrate. So, if you do have that opportunity, please go out to, to participate or to at least be there to acknowledge our, our scholars. In order for all this to take place, though, we, we have many that are involved in supporting and encouraging our young men and our young ladies in their journey. So, I want to kind of take, just congratulate or at least thank our staff, our community, for really pouring into our students and preparing them for what's to come. And that's many of those that will be graduating tomorrow, along with all the others that will be transitioning from elementary to middle, from middle to high, and then those off to college. As you know, we have many exciting end-of-the-year events, so I've had the opportunity to go to a lot of moving up ceremonies, from pre-K to kindergarten to fifth grade, to middle school, and then looking forward to tomorrow's high school graduation. It's just amazing to see the students, seeing them dress sharp with their families and just celebrating these accomplishments, with the understanding that these are just milestones that they've got to accomplish, and the ultimate one is to walk that stage for those that are doing that tomorrow. Friday, we will launch our Summer Meals kickoff, which will begin at noon at Jerry Barrow Park. I can't say enough in thanking Elaine Reynolds, Terry Galouli, and just the support that went into this particular effort, along with Rebecca Hendricks. So, there's a lot of work that's gone in it, but we're providing meals throughout the summer in partnership with Sickom. And this is something that's game-changing for this community, but something that I know, you know, as we speak of Schenectady Rising, we continue to provide these different, unique opportunities for our families and kind of closing those, reducing those obstacles and those challenges and bringing those resources closer to our families. Our Summer Enrichment Program will begin on July eighth, so if you have that opportunity to kind of stop by and see our students participating in programs across this, across the district, we would, that would be great. We're steadily, we're moving slowly but steadily over to Five Thirty Liberty. So, I want to thank Brian, is Brian here? Brian Dangler for his support and his efforts as it relates to these moves, and also want to thank him as we, you know, last week, we hit some pretty high temperatures. So, I know that there's work for us, you know, work for us, work for, work to be done as it relates to this particular work, but I think his team did a phenomenal job in providing, you know, the fans and the water. But I want to share to the community that, you know, these, these are things that are going to be priority as we transition into the summer, working with Terry, our CFO, but also working with SEI to just find creative ways to make sure that we can close that gap and make sure that we can provide these supports as we transition and be, be prepared as we transition to the following school year. Let's see. Once again, you know, the most important part for us is tomorrow. So, looking forward, this will be my first commencement as superintendent, so just looking forward to tomorrow and celebrating with our, with our scholars.
Thank you, Superintendent Cotto. Board members will now have a chance and opportunity to share comments about district or community events, school liaison updates, and/or agenda items. We will begin our board comments with super, or with student Board Representative Joyce, and I do want to say, welcome, Joyce, to your first meeting at our board table. If we can give her a hand. We are so excited and happy to have you join us at the table.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello and good evening, Dr. Cotto, President Rivera, and fellow board members. I want to thank you for this opportunity to be able to represent and advocate for the students of the Schenectady School District. I worked with Zawanna throughout this school year, and I was able to see the impact having a student representative on the board has on the students, enabling them to speak up and out with us, with us, and I'm so proud that Schenectady was one of the schools to add student representatives prior to the decision by lawmakers. In the upcoming school year, in the upcoming school, I plan to continue on some of the work that has already been done, living out loud and some of the ELL programs, like the Iron Bilingual Prince. I also want to mention that the high school graduation is tomorrow, June twenty-seventh. Congratulations to all the Schenectady High graduates. We wish you the best of luck, and I hope, and hope you continue to be great in every space you step into. I commend all of their hard work and dedication. In addition, congratulations to Zawanna, our, our own student representative. Also, congratulations to our GED graduates who had their grad, graduation on June sixth. For all of our returning students, have a great summer and stay cool.
Thank you, Student Representative Joyce. Thank you so much. And we will continue with board comments. We will start with Erica, then Jamaica, Amanda, Kathy, Nohalani, and myself. Board Member Erica?
All right, last board meeting. It's wild. It's been a, it's been a three years. Thought for a while what I was going to say was like, explain why I didn't run again, and I realized it just came down to four pretty, pretty straightforward things. One, I really just wanted to thank everyone who gave me the opportunity to sit on this board and do this work. It's been really important and special to me. Two, I want to thank my support system at home, my husband, Michael, my mom, my sweetie puppies, Bobby and Homer, because y'all know, coming home for some of these board meetings, sometimes you might not be in the best mood, you might be stressed out, and they've always been really understanding, and the pup's always good for a good snuggle laughter. Are you off? No. Third, I want to thank all of you. I mean, my other seat, I can actually see all of you, but it's been a privilege serving on this board with you. I'm so proud of all of the courageous conversations we've been able to have, all the work we've been able to do. It's really been great. And then, fourth, and, you know, with no surprise, no comment.
And we will continue with Board Member Jamaica.
Hey, y'all. Um, I, I really just want to say I'm going to miss staring at Erica on the other side of the table. That's literally the only thing I've been thinking about today. I'm like, what do I want to talk about tonight? I want to talk about Erica. It's the only thing I want to talk about. I did consider saying no comment, and then I decided, no, because I don't think she'll get it. But I, I am absolutely going to miss having you at the table as part of the discussion, but I do not anticipate that there will be a loss for your contributions to this district and to the work that we do. So, while you may not be sitting at the table, I still think you'll have a seat at the table. So, just thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Jamaica. Board Member Amanda?
Well, now, I feel like I'm going to say it because Erica says it all the time, but I have no comment.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Board Member Kathy?
Thank you, Erica, for your service to this board. And I have, I do have a couple of things. I wanted to mention the GED graduation on June sixth, which was, which was quite well-attended, and it's always exciting to see people who have had the resilience and, and the guts to go through it and eventually achieve their, their GED. I also was able to attend the Special Olympics. I don't know if we exactly call it that, but it was, it's a uniforms, unified, unified sports at Union College, held for many of our children with special needs, and they seemed to have a ball. I didn't get to see all of the events they participated in, but, but it, it is worthwhile, worthwhile seeing on, and that was held on June eleventh. I was able to attend the Spring Concert for Pleasant Valley. I think it felt like summer the day I was there, but nonetheless, it was the Spring Concert. And also, the Oneida Moving Up Ceremony last Friday night. I would like to call attention to the fact that on our website, you will note that there is the opportunity for lap swimming for adults in the community. And that starts July eighth, and I believe goes to August eighth. It's seven to eight-thirty in the morning and two-thirty to three-thirty in the afternoon. I know the community has been anxious to use the pool again, and this is our attempt to provide that. So, look at the website for that information. That's it for me. Thank you.
And Vice President Nohalani?
Good evening. Yes, it's been extremely busy towards the end of the school year, so I do want to applause all of the students, the staff, the faculty, everyone that has had a hand in making this such a successful school year. We've made it to the end of the school year, and I know that my daughter is wildly celebrating. She's very excited for this. So, really nice job, everybody. Thank you, as always, until we do this again in the fall. I also attended the GED graduation alongside Board President Rivera and Board Members Jamaica and Kathy. Congratulations again to all of those students, the perseverance, the hard work, the dedication, the families that supported them, like, really, really, really solid job, really excited to see what you all do next, and really excited to see how it goes tomorrow evening. This is actually exciting that it's from six to nine. If anyone, well, obviously, those of you who have been in attendance, it's hot out there. So, I'm kind of looking forward to the six to nine, just to see if it's a little cooler and comfortable out there. But I do have to say, lastly, to Board Member Erica, it has been an absolute pleasure working alongside you. You have always brought just that element of, of laughter and fun, and just kind of, you know, like you said, those courageous conversations that we've all had. You've brought levity a lot of those times, and so, really going to miss you being here and just kind of hearing whatever quips that you may have at any given moment in time. But, no, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you. I'm like Jamaica, Board Member Jamaica said, I'm sure you're still here, you'll be sharing whatever you have with us, and, yeah, no, I just wanted to say thank you, and I appreciate it.
Dear Erica, I will make it four more first, but we have had the pleasure of having you on the board. You are upbeat. Your sense of humor, how Nohalani described it, I mean, you have broken the ice many times and have really lightened the mood of the board when we have those tough conversations, which is very much welcomed. That's why we're such an awesome board, because there's so many dynamic, wonderful, different personalities that just kind of mesh together. But you also have a lot of wit and wisdom, and it will have a lasting impact on our board and the deliberations and the decisions we made. And we have to find somebody on the board that has as much wit as she does. So, we have to step up. We are grateful for your dedication and leadership, and we will miss your presence, contribution, contributions, and most of all, your humor. So, everyone, please join us in expressing our heartfelt thanks and best wishes to Erica Brockmire as she concludes this chapter of her service to our school district. But I know we will see you. At least, we will see you come to the podium and say, no comment.
Y'all get out of hand, I'm coming.
And of course, Erica, we have something for you, and it's not candy.
It's not a snuggle either.
Deputy Superintendent Joe shared that already. So, this is a plaque for you. It says, "The Schenectady City School District Board of Education recognizes Erica Brockmire for her fun, her wit," no, I'm just playing, "for her hard work and dedication to the Schenectady City School District, with thanks for her leadership and service on the Board of Education, 2021 to 2024." You're going to take a picture. I do have a few more things I wanted to mention. So, I have, and I know many have mentioned some of the events that have been going on in the school district, and there are many. So, I'm going to quickly just mention several, several events, and then later on, not later today, but some other time, I'll mention a bit more. So, the high school had a hiring fair on May thirty-first, and I have materials for the board. I didn't bring them today, but I will bring it. It was, it was great. There were a lot of vendors there, a lot of opportunities for our schools, for our students. I also visited Howe on June fourth. It was a great concert. The, the, they had, I do want to shout out a few folks, Ms. Lisa Long, orchestra, Ms. Ashley Naravuthu, and music, Ms. Madeline Scoto. They did an amazing job, and it was under the principle or the leadership of Mr. Sitz. Then, June sixth, I visited Keene, and they had a concert, again, wonderful. Ms. Mazerone was the chorus, Ms. Naravuthu, and I apologize for mispronouncing the last name, she's banned. This is under the leadership of Ms. Messler. The teacher celebration at Zahler had a lot of tenured teachers that were there, they completed their first year. They were joined by their mentors, many of our ELT and other administrator, administrators were there. I'll name several. Dr. Chisholm, Correla Perante, David Kriegen, Kim Pila, Erica Wardell, Lee Akinelli, Valerie Smith, Michael Colvo, Trevor Tripp, and then, from Student Support Services, Andrea Tote Freeman, Trania Leary, Stephen Kraus, Angela Pastizo, and Carolyn Manzelli. So, thank you so much. It was a great event. It was great to see our new teachers celebrating. Also, the GED, fantastic. And I do want to shout out a few people there as well. Vice President mentioned the board members that were there, but also JRTC students, Jessie Roylands, who's the Director of Adult Education, Michelle Ratz, who's the Assistant Director of Adult Education, Mayor Gary McCarthy was there, Executive Director of Schools, Tyrone Omealy, Dr. Chisholm, and of course, Superintendent Cotto and Deputy Superintendent Joe DiCaprio were also in attendance. It was a great program. Oneida Middle School Spring Concert, awesome. I have names, and I will pause, and next time, I will share some more of the events that were going on. Happy graduation, everyone. I'll see you tomorrow. We have the privilege, we're just going to transition to the policy. We have the privilege tonight of hearing from our Policy Committee Chair, Vice President Nohalani, who will be providing an overview of two policies for our collective review and consideration. As you know, our policy committee is formed of BOE members, Vivian Jamaica and Vice President Nohalani, as well as Superintendent Cotto, Deputy Superintendent Joe, District Clerk Michelle, and Deputy Clerk Martha, who play a crucial role in shaping the framework that guides our district's operations and ensures we uphold, and ensures we uphold our commitment to excellence in education. I will now invite Policy Chair Nohalani to share the policy under review to the board.
So, good evening again. We do have two policies for first read this evening. The first is Policy eight-two-eight-zero. This is the policy around the instruction for English language learners and multilingual learning. I do want to open it up to ask if anyone has any questions or concerns, thoughts. I know that Board President Rivera did share some with us previously, but if there isn't anyone, perhaps, we'll share some.
Yeah, sure. So, what I did share with Vice President Nohalani and Deputy Superintendent Caprio and Superintendent Cotto, a few, few things, I won't mention everything, but at the very beginning of the policy, I thought it would be helpful to have a little information about why we need to support our Ls and Mls. And there is some legislation, and it's brief, legislation that I suggested that we add to that policy. The other piece, too, that I suggested was that we divide the policy into four sections after the intro, so, ELL and Mls, but then, ELL, Mel with disabilities, because there's some information there about specifically with disabilities, and it's very different than Mls without disabilities. And then, there's a little section there that talks about parent, guardian, and caretaker, so again, another paragraph there. And then, New York State has some regulations, or actually, in the policy it mentions regulations, so that can be another section. So, those were some of my suggestions, and again, I did email it to the Policy Chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments, questions?
Just a question, Bernice. The legislation you're referencing, is it in addition to what we have referenced at the bottom?
Yeah, there's a, mhm, there's a landmark case that I cited, in nineteen sixty-four, Division Lau and Nichols, and the reason that I mentioned it is because I know in light of things that are going on in society, I think that this will help, for folks who are looking at our policy, will help ground us in why we're doing this. This is not because we want to, we have to. There's a court case behind this.
Is this a new policy?
No, this is not a new policy.
So, has it been, which sections have been changed or not?
Is that not on the?
I'm sorry, I can't.
Sorry, I apologize. That may not be readily available. I don't know if it's on the board docs. It was supposed to be outlined and read for you.
I could go back to the policy in the board, in the website or whatever, so, okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, if there are no other questions, we'll move to Policy number eight-six-three-six, which is the use of artificial intelligence, or AI. This is a new policy.
I was going to guess that one.
This is new, and so, we do obviously want to make sure that we have something in place because AI is everywhere. I think NISP is actually going to be talking a little bit about that, too, and how districts can best support their students. So, I'll open the floor to the board to see if there's any questions.
I do have some comments. So, before or after the first paragraph, I suggested kind of explaining what AI is. So, it's like one sentence that I did send. AI-generated content refers to any form of digital content, such as text, images, videos, or audio, and I won't read the rest, but that's one of my suggestions. And then, instead of the policy cited, because that policy, seven-three-one-zero, really doesn't say anything, so I was thinking, or I shouldn't say that, but it's just, I didn't, it refer, it, it references another policy, but it's like a one-sentence policy, seven-three-one-zero. But I was thinking that we can replace that with seven-three-one-six, which is student use of computerized info resources, and it may need some updating. And then, number six-four-seven-zero, staff use of computerized info resources, as well as eight-two-seven-one, the Children's Internet Protection Act. And I think all of them might need a little bit of tweaking, but I suggested those. And that was, oh, and then, the other thing is that, and I did email Andrea Tote, Assistant Superintendent Andrea Tote, because I didn't, and I couldn't find anything in the Code of Conduct, and it mentions about plagiarism somewhere, or academic misconduct, so I sent some suggestions so that we're aligned with, the policy is aligned with the Code of Conduct. And that was it for me.
Any other questions, thoughts, concerns?
Thank you. I think this is great, the AI policy, having one, I think is great. Thank you.
It'll probably be drafted again in about a week by AI itself. See, Erica, she's picking up the slack already.
Board President, I just want to go back, because we do have to vote on the recognition of Board Member Erica.
She got a whole resolution.
So, I'll accept a motion to approve the recognition of Board Member Erica Brockmire. May I have a motion? Thank you, Board Member Jamaica, second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Amanda, and thank you, District Clerk Michelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I was going to mess with you. The motion carries to accept the resolution for Erica Brockmire. Okay, so, at past board meetings, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Chisholm, and Executive Director of Schools, Tyrone Omealy, have provided us with information about the administrative walkthroughs. Before we vote on the Bullseye Resolution tonight, Dr. Chisholm will provide additional information about the walkthroughs, the connection with instruction specifically around literacy and math, and the general purpose of the walkthrough tool we will be voting on tonight. Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Cotto, Board President Rivera, Board Members, Committee. So, as you can make recall, at the beginning of the school year, we discussed Y2Y, Year to Instruction, while every year is the Year of Instruction, right? And our need to really think about how we capture building, building-wide instructional practices, and the need for quality teacher feedback beyond the APR process, which is only conducted three times a year. And so, we, as building and district leaders, found that we needed a more tech-reliable platform than the one we piloted this year through the district, that affords the ability to build more customizable reports that support building leaders in collecting and monitoring walkthrough data. And so, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we re-vetted platforms, and Bullseye actually was the platform that won the vetting process. And the committee did entail principals, instructional coaches, everybody, pretty much, tech folks, as well as the Office of Teaching and Learning. And so, we will be shifting to Bullseye, which is a walkthrough, a coaching, and a feedback platform that really will help us to measurably improve and enhance teachers' instructional practices, hopefully, then impacting students. and enhance teachers' instructional practices, hopefully then impacting students' test scores. And so, it's going to be really important for us to not only capture those practices that happen in the classroom on a daily basis across the building, but also to capture and streamline the strength-based feedback that we need teachers to receive, and what type of feedback principals are giving, so that teachers can, one, celebrate successes, and then also collaborate on areas of growth, whether it's by grade level, whether it's by content area, those type things. So how do we then take all that data and marry it all together to then develop professional development for either individual or groups of teachers? And so, this year, because it will be customized to capture the district's instructional non-negotiables, as well as coming out of our DTSD reviews, those components that are specific to the buildings based on their DTSD recommendations. So each building having its own culture and climate also has its own needs. So while we have district-wide non-negotiable components as it relates to literacy, and as it relates to what happens in mathematic classrooms, again, the literacy walkthrough tool being able to be applied to social studies and other content areas, this will also look at, for example, Kane has specific indicators that they need to address to meet their receivership, which is different than what my Pleasant might need to address based on their DTSD recommendations. So this year, moving forward, we're going to make it more customizable, so that those buildings can gather the data, the feedback, and then be able to monitor, which will also help them support and monitor their ESSEPs, which then also helps to us, as a district, monitor our DSEPs as it relates to math, literacy, and instructional practices. In addition to that, the Bullseye platform will also help us to ensure our return on investment as it relates to professional development. We send a lot of teachers and leaders to a lot of PD, but we need to, it goes back to the inspecting what we expect. How does that then show up and translate in our classrooms? And then, what is the impact on student performance around those practices, those best shared practices? So we really want to see how those instructional practices are implemented, and then align them with those student outcomes. We do have our instructional handbook that is available on Schenectady Learns, and that's something I can share at a future date. I did provide hard copies, but it has been updated, and is currently being updated for the 24-25 academic school year. But it talks about the research behind classroom walkthroughs, the importance of, you know, building principals assessing what is happening in the classrooms across the schools and across the district, and also the importance of quality and timely feedback. The same feedback we want teachers to give students is the same feedback we need to give teachers to improve their craft. So that is the reason why we're making that pivot. It comes down to the data and being able to make it customizable to meet the needs of schools.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Teaching of Learning, Dr. Chisholm. Thank you. Any questions from board members? Thank you again. So we will now vote on the Bullseye Resolution. I'll accept a motion to approve the Bullseye Resolution. May I have a motion?
So moved, Erica.
Thank you, board member Erica, second. Vice president Nohalani, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion to accept the Bullseye Resolution carries. The next order of business are the Consent Agenda items. The Consent Agenda items includes items to be approved by consent, and were previously sent to the board for review. However, single items can be considered separately and taken off the Consent Agenda by a single member. Does anyone wish to do so? Okay, so Resolution 7 through 10E, itemized on the Consent Agenda are presented for approval. I'll accept a motion to approve these items. May I have a motion?
So moved, Kathy.
Thank you, board member Kathy, second?
Second.
Thank you, vice president. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion to accept Resolution 710E carries. We have a second opportunity for comments from the public or the board, and actually, I'm going to remind, we're going to recognize a new employee, so I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Cotto. You see, we like suspense.
So we have two employees that have just been approved to move forward with us in the district. So Natasha Manguru, if you can please stand. And then, Dr. Scott Selman. Hope I said it right. Selman, congratulations.
Welcome to Schenectady. Welcome.
Natasha's been with us.
Welcome again back to Schenectady, in a new position. So we have a second opportunity for comments from the public or the board. Any comments?
Have a great summer.
Yes.
And congratulations, because I don't recall having done this to our retiring staff and teachers. We used to have a regular, full recognition of retirement on an outside event, but that hasn't, at least to my knowledge, didn't happen. That we were invited to. But at any rate, I hope they all have a marvelous retirement. Thank you.
To the students that struggled, to the families that found it a difficult year, thank you for showing up anyways. Come back next year, even though you may think to yourself, why the hell should I? Because we are here, and we want every single one of our students and families to be successful. We know that it's not easy for everybody, and while we celebrate all the great successes, I think too often, we forget about the students who continue to struggle and aren't quite there yet. And I say yet, because I firmly have the belief that they're all capable. So please stick with it. To the families, to the teachers that are, you know, I know this kid can do it. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Because there are so many teachers that go above and beyond to ensure that students know they're capable, even when they're struggling. And you know what? A special shout out to just every single staff person, regardless of what your position is, because every single position makes it possible for us to be able to educate students every single day, and they're all valuable. And I can't wait for Summer Enrichment to start, and I'm counting the days already. Okay.
How many?
I'm not gonna tell you. It's too many. That's what it is. I love my children. I love them.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to just kind of piggyback on what Jamaica has shared, but I mean, just to all of our staff, you know, from our families to our community, ELT, district staff, building-level staff, thank you. Thank you for your commitment to the work that you put in this year in supporting and empowering and engaging our youth. Please, as you transition into summer, unplug, get re-energized, and come back, because we're going to come back stronger to continue to pour into our youth and prepare them, you know, as they transition from middle school to high school, elementary, middle, high, and then off to college and career. So just thank you all for your continued support and your commitment to Schenectady, and looking forward to working with all of you as we transition.
Thank you. Thank you, board member Jamaica. Thank you, Superintendent Cotto. So at this time, if there's no further business to discuss, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved, Erica.
Board member Erica, second?
Second.
Thank you, board member Amanda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Have a wonderful evening and a great summer, everyone.